Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for Grand Blank Township for Tuesday, April 5th. If we could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There you go. You can say amen at the end if you want. Let's see here. So we called the meeting to order and Clerk Robertson, would you like to call the roll?
I'd be delighted, Mr. Supervisor. Thank you. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Here.
Myself. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, seven members present. A quorum.
Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Motion by Dr. Raridan.
Motion by Raridan.
Supported by Trustee Hugo.
And supported by Hugo. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. And at this time, I will open the floor for any public comment that anybody wishes to make. We just ask that you keep it to three minutes or less and please give us your name and address for the record. Anybody care to speak?
We're going to have a public meeting, public comments for the public meeting.
Uh, let's see. Yes, we will have a public hearing for the Parks and Rec Master Plan coming up in a little bit here. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Please come up. Good evening. Just, uh, if you can state your name and address?
Janelle Reeves, sixty fifty.
Janelle Reeves?
Janelle, G-E-N-E-L-L, Reeves, R-E-E, V as in Victor, E-S, sixty fifty-four, Steeplechase Drive.
Steeplechase.
Grand Blank.
Good evening.
Good evening. I came in to inquire about my taxes and I wanted to know if I could just, um, make a payment. And I was told that I couldn't do that and I asked if it could be just put in as a credit towards whatever the summer taxes would be. And I was told that there was no way to do that. So I was coming in for an explanation of maybe why or is it possible in the future that we can be able to come in if we want to make payments towards our summer taxes?
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Um, we generally try not to answer all the questions that we may receive during public comment because otherwise it changes our agenda. Um, what I would do, Mr. Limina, any suggestions?
Now, if we can get your phone number or a good contact number, I'll have somebody reach out to you to talk about it. And if I understand your question correctly, you're asking to prepay summer taxes. You want to pay them in advance?
Yeah. And if, you know, if it's not paid in full, then whatever is, um, needed to make that payment in full would be paid by September 1st.
Okay. If, um, I don't want to have you say your, um, phone number publicly, but Mr. Sears, would you mind, um, getting the phone number for me and, uh, I'll have somebody reach out and talk to you about it?
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. We always love it when people want to pay their taxes.
I'm shocked we don't.
Would anybody else care to make a public comment? Okay. See, no further public comment. Uh, we'll bring it back here to the dais and I will ask for a motion, if somebody would like to make a motion, to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Trustee Fike, supported by Trustee White.
Trustee White. Okay. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will now have a public hearing for Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Uh, Mr. Limina, would you like to have any introductory remarks?
The, uh, this is a five-year master plan update and now that we have Director Linehan here, this is, this is great because we're, we've got the opportunity, if you think about where we've been over the last, um, two years since we brought, uh, Patrick on board, which was about March twenty-third of, uh, twenty twenty. That was the day we shut down the office. I always, I just like to point that out. His first day on the job for COVID. But it, this is a long process, a very lengthy process, very involved. Um, and we're at the point now where we're trying to get that public comment on a good draft of this thing. It's going to be very important for us to get this thing approved, uh, by the board because we use this document in order for us to be able to seek and qualify for any grants that we may be able to get to, um, help us in our recreational pursuits. Patrick?
Good evening.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so as Superintendent Limina mentioned, uh, this is something that has to be done every five years by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, uh, in order to go for, um, trust fund grants, land and water conservation grants, or Michigan Passport Grants. So, uh, when you, uh, pay that twelve dollars, uh, when you get your license, uh, plate, that goes into a grant program. Um, ten percent of that goes back, uh, to local municipalities that you can, um, uh, that we can apply for. So, uh, this is a guiding document, uh, that lists, uh, the direction that we want to go, uh, some of the things we want to accomplish, and the DNR references back to that when we, uh, apply for, uh, any of those state grants.
Okay. Any questions so far?
Really, the purpose of today is to, uh, any public comment that we, um, get. This is the, is this going to be the last public comment period available, Patrick?
Um, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll leave it open till the end of the week and at the end of the week, public comment will be done and then, uh, we'll make any adjustments that we feel that we need to make. Uh, and then I would expect to see it most likely at the next board meeting for approval.
Patrick or Mr. Linehan, any idea how many people we've, uh, involved in the process? I know that, uh, you had a couple of days of interviews with, you know, here in the township.
Yep. So, um, uh, we did have a workday. Uh, we had about fifteen people for that. Uh, and then we did a community survey and, uh, we got, um, a little over three hundred people, which is pretty good for a community survey, so.
So we've had plenty of participation already?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. Well, do we need to formally open for comments?
Public comment, yep.
Okay. So we'll, uh, open the floor for any public comment with regard to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Yoncho Senior, one zero six four zero, Halsey Road. Uh, I'd like to speak in favor of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, uh, future plan. Um, I think Patrick and his team, who he worked with, did an excellent job. You know, on a planning commission we just finished not too long ago, a, uh, a master plan and I know what that process is like. It's very lengthy and, um, you know, you've got to make sure everything is done right. Um, but I, you know, I think that park is, uh, one of the gems of our township, but it can be better. Um, you know, and I think his priorities are the, the master plan's priorities are just exactly right to pave the parking lot, if, for instance. Um, that parking lot can be a disaster at certain times. And, uh, you know, building an additional shelter and, and additional toilets in the park, I think is fantastic idea. And the trail system seems to be well-used. To, to expand that would be beneficial. And I really like the fact that they would like to get a recycling program going. That sounds, because we lack that, I think, in the community, any, any leadership towards recycling. And then lighting, uh, you know, so we can do more nighttime events. And then, uh, the restoration of the Perry Center, restoration and parking at the Perry Center, uh, you know, that's Perry House. That's, uh, another gem that we have that's underutilized because of those restrictions on parking and things. So I hope that, uh, his plan gets approved and, and we can move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Yoncho. Okay. Anybody else who wants to make public comment with regard to the Parks and Rec Master Plan? Okay. See, no further public comment. We will close public comment and bring back to the board. Uh, do we need to have any kind of vote at this time or that will come later?
Later.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Linehan. Our old business, our strategic plan update. Mr. Limina?
So, uh, for this evening, we, uh, selected two things. First one being pension and OPEB funding, the other one being the fire station and DPS, uh, Public Services Facility. Within the, um, pension and OPEB funding, there's a couple of things that I wanted to bring to the board's attention that I think are very important. First and foremost, um, the legacy costs, obviously, uh, when we talk about our OPEB funding and why we're so concerned are the things that we, um, that are concerning us the most from a financial standpoint for our financial future. OPEB, we have made, um, great progress on, but it can, you know, when I say that, going from thirteen to like, you know, fifty-eight percent funded is amazing in a, in a short period of time, but we're still fifty-eight percent funded. We have a long ways to go before we're going to be in a comfort level. Um, probably, uh, the biggest thing that I think that the board needs to focus on at this current time, because we're going to be going into negotiations with the Police Department, has to do with the defined benefit plan and what we're going to do to address that moving forward in the future. To that end, as you guys are aware, I've been working with, uh, groups of officers, um, all three police units. We've had the ability to sit down. We met last week again for about an hour and a half and, uh, talked about some of the history. Um, I've prepared some of that information. In fact, I'm, uh, one of the things I think that you should consider is a, a closed session for this evening. Um, and I did put the motion and what it would be relating to for the purposes of strategy sessions connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements. I think you guys should have a conversation around whether or not, and I've mentioned this before, one of the alternatives could be, uh, the, um, renewal of the millage. The last time it was renewed, and I included that for you, was in twenty nineteen, uh, November fifth of twenty nineteen. The board at that time only did it for five years, so it was inclusive from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. What that means for you guys is that we're still, we can collect that police millage and it was renewed at one mill, um, for, through twenty twenty-three. Because it's through the end of twenty twenty-three, it can go out on the tax bills in December of twenty twenty-three, but it will be the last one you have approved. So you're going to have to have that approved before December of twenty twenty-four in order to continue to collect the millage. Um, if you were considering additional millage requests, and I know, um, that's a somewhat contentious issue, uh, because it, you know, involves asking the voters to, um, to consider an increased millage, uh, but if you were going to do that, um, there are some dates that are important and that has to be, the ballot wording has to be certified to the county clerk, uh, no later than four PM, twelve Tuesdays before the election. For the August twenty twenty-two election, that would mean May fourth, your meeting of May fourth, you would have to approve that language because we have to have it in by May tenth to the county clerk's office. Uh, and that's why I would ask if you are going to consider that at all, that you would at least tonight maybe consider. I, I need some more feedback on the direction that you want me to go as we formulate our negotiations, negotiation strategy, regardless of whether it includes millage or not. But I think it's something to consider and, um, there's other options, of course, and we've talked through some of those. Bridging the, uh, benefit in some form or fashion. Uh, you could close the plan completely, bond it out, uh, and move forward. Um, you know, all of those, uh, are available to you, uh, including raising that millage, like I said. I just need to have a better feel for the board and I think that if we do that, that would be, um, important if we want to hit those dates for language. If we don't hit those dates, we've taken that off the table, at least as far as an August election. It's still happening in a November election, again, twelve Tuesdays back.
If this board's willing, I would, I would like to entertain the idea of going into closed session, uh, at the end of the meeting to, uh, discuss that particular topic. Mr. Limina? So, um, if we can hold off on discussion on, on the pension and OPEB until we go into closed session, um, until the end of the meeting, we'll, uh, we'll cover that topic.
And that's perfect. I can jump to the next, um, strategic planning thing. I do, uh, again, want to say, uh, how, how much I appreciate the, um, willingness of, uh, patrol, the, uh, command and the sergeant's units to take the opportunity to, to spend an hour and a half with me last week. A lot of it's an education for me, too. The program's been in existence since nineteen ninety-three. I'm trying to put together a two-page, uh, handout so that it'll give all of the history to you guys as board members, so you'll understand where a lot of it came from. I'm trying to go back and, and parcel it out of notes and, and, um, contracts and I can tell you that, uh, it's tough to do it that way, being able to have these guys who have lived it and they can share that information with me is, is just been phenomenal. So, um, they've been great to work with. We're all in this together, uh, and I think that, um, because of the input that they've given me, my fact sheet that I provide you is going to be, uh, a heck of a lot better than it would be if it was just me trying to put it together, piece it together from what I have in my file cabinet.
Mr. Limina, you had mentioned the language for going into closed session. Was that in the packet or?
I put it on the agenda memo. If you look under the possible courses of action, um, under the pension funding, um, pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight C.
Uh, sorry, I see it. I see it on there.
I, I don't. Am I looking at a previous?
Seventy-one. Oh, it's right here.
The agenda memo, um, specifically.
Seventy-one, did you say?
Yep.
Okay. Forgive me, I.
Bottom, possible courses of action.
Oh, well, I was looking for some pre-standing language there.
So anything with regard to Public Services Facility Fire Station, Mr. Limina?
Yeah, so we've been moving forward with that and, um, we have, uh, went out for RFQs. We got six proposals back. We're looking for the, uh, project management firm to come in to help us put that entire plan together. Um, the six proposals were, uh, uh, very complete and I, as you would expect, kind of, um, all over the place. Uh, I did include a sheet in the packet that kind of showed you who we got them from. Uh, one of the things that we've learned is that it was really two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen when we put our space needs assessment study together. And at that point, when we were looking at what kind of budget we would be working with, at about fourteen and a half million dollars for the combined DPS and Foreign Department Facility, uh, almost, uh, if not everybody that responded to our RFQ told us that, um, those dollar amounts were no longer viable in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. A lot of it has to do with supply chain issues, prices steel, all that kind of thing, labor. Um, so we're, we're going to maybe have a little bit of an awakening there as we move through this, um, program. The other thing was, we had a very aggressive timeframe and one we'd like to see this thing completed. And I think that they've tried to share with us their professional expertise that we're a little too aggressive, especially again with known supply chain issues and everything else. So it's going to take a little longer and it's going to cost a little bit more money. Um, but using figures back from three or four years ago, that's probably not a big surprise to any of us. Uh, we're not there through the selection process yet. I do have, um, DPS Director, uh, Jeff Sears here as well. Uh, he, uh, Bob Burdatt, Deputy Chief, um, Kent Miracle, uh, Greg Boggs, uh, Mr. Sears, myself, have all been through these, uh, proposals. We're not prepared to make a recommendation quite yet this evening, uh, but we have narrowed it down. We're going to bring some people in, but it really looks like it's probably somewhere between two and three percent of the overall construction costs are what we're going to pay for program manager. Jeff, is there anything that I needed to add?
Yes, Mr. White. I have a question. So, uh, is there any way to determine, Dennis, um, roughly how much more percentage-wise, best guess, this is going to cost?
You know, it, we'll do that as we move forward. In fact, one of the proposals, they came in and said, why don't we flat fee it at, not to exceed price of a hundred and nine thousand dollars to get you through the pre-construction phase for their services? And then they will, um, design it a little bit better on the construction phase once they really know what those costs are. Um, you know, I, I just, I got the feeling that, I, I mean, maybe it'll surprise me more, but I, I think we're going to be two and a half or three million dollars higher than what we had anticipated when we first looked at this, uh, back then. And of course, if that is the case, um, part of this overall process, uh, is then to look at all the alternatives to funding financing. I mean, there's bonding, there's local financing, there's a lot of ways to go, uh, after this thing. It would be great if we were, say, expiring the, uh, police building, uh, bonds and this was going to come in, but that timing isn't until twenty thirty-one. Our need is now. So we have to work at, um, figuring this in. One of the things that we've been trying to do is, we're not going to ask residents for any additional funds. We're going to afford this within, uh, the parameters that we have now. Of course, that requires a little bit of additional taxable growth, but we have had phenomenal growth over the last five years. We continue to be very attractive. We're bringing in that new business on the south end. All of those things help us. Um, but I, I won't be surprised, uh, the Trustee Fike, if it's, if it's two and a half or three million dollars, uh, higher than what we had initially, um, projected.
Any other questions regarding where we're at? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Limina.
Next steps then would be, uh, we'll define this. We're going to do personal interviews with the top three out of the six who responded. Uh, and then, uh, once we get through those, uh, we'd like to have the building committee, uh, together again so that we can show where we're at and get your concurrence that when we make the recommendation to the board, uh, that the building committee has also weighed in on it.
Sounds good to me. Is that good with everybody here? Okay. We'll keep moving forward. Thank you. Sounds like there's progress that we're making on that. Okay. Moving on to new business, uh, the board will consider Resolution twenty-two dash three to opt into the Pay As You Go Pays Program. Is that, uh, Mr. Laddie or Ms. Limina?
Mr. Limina wrote an excellent summary of it.
Okay.
I think it came from his, uh, his department.
All right.
Essentially, you know, I think we call it the Pay As You Stay Program and it is a reversal of what we heard in public comments today. It's the ability for property owners who qualify to be able to stay in their homes and make payments on their property taxes. And, um, again, Mr. Limina's summary is excellent. The, uh, resolution is fairly straightforward and, um, I think if you are, um, amenable to the concept, um, adopting that resolution would be in order.
Does anybody have any questions with regard to it, concerns? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. To move forward with this, with the Pays Program?
That's correct.
Your support? Support by Trustee Hugo?
Trust, support by Trustee Hugo. Um, uh, record roll call?
Please.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Item B, the board will consider a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two Grand Blank Township Local Road Improvement Plan and authorize the township supervisor to execute all agreements. Mr. Limina? You have Mr. Sears coming up?
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, so this is something you're going to see annually from us. Each year, we, uh, we, meaning myself and Mr. Limina, uh, meet with the Road Commission to discuss what maintenance needs to be done to our local road system. Uh, we also discuss any kind of projects to our primary road system and upcoming for subdivision roads, although there's not a lot in that arena. But, um, this is what, uh, we've come up with for twenty twenty-two. What they do is each year, the Road Commission allocates a certain amount of money to Grand Blank Township. Um, I believe for this funding year, it's, uh, two hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars. And what we have to do is we have to match that dollar for dollar. For any road, two hundred and seventy-eight. So we match that, uh, dollar for dollar for any road, local road projects that we want to complete. Um, for this year, we have proposed Bella Vista Drive, which is, um, if you're familiar with the, the cut-through from Kroger to Perry Road, the very end of that is actually a township road. So that road was repaved a couple of years ago. The residents had the chance to participate at the time through Special Assessment District. They chose not to. Um, so now we have the ability with the new, uh, Road Commission policy to apply these funds to that road as a local road, whereas before it was considered more of a residential subdivision street. Um, the next road is Reed Road from Door Highway to the city limits. And then there's a, a culvert for the Brookview Drain, which is Meadowwood Lane, um, that also needs to be replaced. Um, I'm unclear right now on the culvert, if the total cost is Grand Blank Township's or if that's also a matching, uh, but we'll get clarification on that as the project moves forward. I do know that the Reed Road project, uh, I got an updated estimate on that. It's actually cheaper than what I have listed here, um, by fifteen thousand dollars or so. So that's good. Both of the road projects are a two-inch resurface, so they'll mill down two inches of asphalt and repave with fresh, uh, pavement. Uh, you know, we've been working very aggressively over the past, well, seven years since I've been here at least, to, uh, put a lot of work into our local roads and the Road Commission says that we're, you know, in very good shape compared to most communities in the, uh, county, mostly because we're able to allocate more resources than most are, I think. But, um, this really rounds out all the local roads that need maintenance. Um, and, you know, we'll, we'll be finding alternative ways to spend this money in the future. Um, and they've really given us a lot of leeway on that in the past couple of years.
There's one problem area that, uh, we are aware of and that's Cook Road.
Correct.
And, uh, for the public, because I, I know we may get some feedback, we're, we're waiting for federal funding. Uh, the road needs to be totally rebuilt. The Road Commission could put a layer on top of it, but it would make it invalid for receiving a federal fund to rebuild it.
Right.
So we're hoping in the next two years that they'll be able to, uh, rebuild that road.
Correct.
And hopefully we can tie in some pathway stuff with that, too, when we do that, maybe. Back on wood.
Cook Road, Embry Road, those are really our last two local roads that haven't had a significant maintenance project in the past five years. So hopefully we can get those, uh, tied up here by twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Sears, with regard to subdivisions, do we have many that are attempting to get a petition going now or?
Uh, this, this time of year, we always have a lot that are attempting to get a petition going because of the potholes. And we have some bad potholes this year. This is the first year we've really had a, a lot of frost in the ground and, uh, as we all know, as the frost comes out of the ground in the spring, the potholes appear. Sarah doesn't have to deal with potholes anymore. She had some of the worst in the whole township.
I wrote his.
Um, but we do have three or four subdivisions that are really bad and all of those subdivisions have interest in repaving right now. So I'm working with the Road Commission to get estimates on that. Um, there's a big one we'll probably talk more about, which is across the street, Wishing Well and Hillcrest. Um, that's a very large area. Both of those subdivisions have interest right now. And if there's a way we can combine those projects and really push it, I think we could get it done and make it somewhat reasonable for residents. So, and that's very important that we do that.
Movement with Warwick?
Well, we have not had any more movement on Warwick Hills, no.
I've gotten a few phone calls from people wanting to do something, but.
I haven't been contacted yet, so.
I asked them to contact you when they called me, so. Yes, Mr. Fike?
I think, uh, Mr. Dr. Raridan. It's okay. Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. The, the money was proposed to use for the Bella Vista, where's that? I'm sorry, where was that?
Bella Vista Drive?
Yeah.
It's, so it's off of Perry Road.
Yeah, the money, I mean...
Fifty-fifty allocation.
It's fifty-fifty allocation fund. So the road commission pays for half, and we pay for half.
And is, and is that normally how the, is that considered a subdivision? I guess that's really what I'm...
They're considering a local road. So from what I had understood, it was a subdivision road, but the road commission recently came and said, it's actually a local road. I don't know how it gets confused or mixed up, but...
Because of that cul-de-sac off of there, like, that's not being included?
Right, correct.
Piece that would be the pass-through road.
Well, I think graph court, I think that, if that's graph court, that would be the townships also.
Yes, it is. That's not included in this project, because that is a subdivision street. So Bella Vista Drive in the city is classified as a local road. They call them local collector roads. So I think that's why the road commission continued at the, at the Perry Road.
Actually, Mr. White had his hand up.
I still have a question. So they rejected a special assessment themselves, and now, I mean, other subdivisions are paying special assessments to get their roads done, so they rejected it, and they're now getting their road back. I guess I have a tough time, sort of. That doesn't seem very equitable to me.
Yeah.
They're paying $1,000 a year for her roads, and they're getting roads that they didn't want to pay for.
I agree. And had we known that it was not a subdivision road back then, we may have taken this route at that time. But we did not know, the road commission at the time was saying, it's a subdivision road, they have to pay for it. The city of Grand Blank was actually doing the project. They offered to let us in on it, and it would have been probably cheaper than what we're paying now. But the residents simply didn't want to do it. They didn't feel like they needed to pay for that road because of the amount of traffic that cuts through there from the city on their road every day. And it is a very busy stretch of road, probably more than what a typical subdivision road would get.
Mr. Hugo?
So regarding Bella Vista, the most recent time that it was paved, they did not put any speed bumps in, but previously, there were speed bumps. Do you know the reasoning?
Technically, speed bumps are illegal for local roads and subdi-, public roadways. They're, they're not allowed. So I, I'm not sure how they ever, I mean, the, the Grand Blank is a city, obviously, so they can pretty much do what they want. But I believe Bella Vista Drive was put in with federal grant money or state grant money. So I think at that time...
Is that one time that those speed bumps?
Right, yeah.
Sure they just weren't potholes?
Can I get some speed bumps on my street?
Clerk Robertson?
Yeah, just thinking ahead, isn't, there's a small piece of Francesca that's also in the township in the city, the street, just a parallel to Bella Vista. Is that a local road also? Have they made that determination? Are they?
I think that's a subdivision road.
Okay, because we have the same, we have a similar situation in that that street is, is both in the city and in the township.
Correct.
So is it the fact that it's in the city and the township is what makes our portion a local road as it relates to Bella Vista?
I think Bella Vista, the reason it's a local road is traffic volume and the connection to the rest of Bella Vista, which the city classifies as a local road.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The local road has to be taking you to something...
Yes, it's got to be a connection.
Trusty Fike?
Jeff, can you briefly explain for people, maybe, that are watching on Facebook and don't know how this process works? How, you know, they get frustrated with the potholes in their subdivision and, you know, where, how that process works, that you have to get fifty, more than 50% of the residents who live in that subdivision to pass?
Correct.
Have to all vote, and then it, then what? Just go through that a little bit.
So the first, the first step is to contact me. And, you know, we'll talk through it, and we'll make a determination on what needs to be done in that subdivision. I'll contact the road commission, I'll work with them to identify the scope of work, whether it's a resurfacing or reconstruction, what drainage work needs to be done and whatnot. They'll develop an estimate, the road commission does, and then with that estimate, we develop the petitions. Usually, at that point, I offer to have a, a public information meeting with the subdivision, so that anybody who lives there can come in, and we can discuss the project, what's going to happen, what the process is during construction, and then we can also discuss the special assessment portion. After that meeting, hopefully, it's a group of residents that want to collect signatures, but you're correct, 51%, and I always screw this up when, when I say it, of those owning, those owning more than 51% of the lineal footage along the road have to sign the petition. So, in one property, if a husband and wife is on deed, they both have to sign the petition. So it's, it's confusing in some ways, because we, we look at the petitions as 51% of lineal footage, but whenever we go to assess, we assess each property equally. And that's a relatively new concept that we've started in the past, maybe 10 years, I think.
Yeah, the petition language is specific to the, to the linear footage. And I've never seen a, a special assessment group want to use the, the foot measurement of the road. They all, they all say, look, a lot's a lot.
Yeah.
Let's move forward at that point.
So usually, I mean, you know, we've had a few successful petitions recently in the past five years or so. And once that is completed, the clerk's department will review the petition, make sure all the signatures are valid. The assessing department reviews the petition, make sure the amount of lineal footage that's needed to meet that 51% or more is obtained. And then we have a public hearing process with the township board, where we approve the, the amount of the project, we approve the special assessment role, basically identifying each parcel that's in that district. And then from there, the board approves the project to move forward, the road commission designs it, and it's built. There is, you know, an opportunity after it's designed and bid, where we could back out of the project. And we have to realize that we are responsible for the engineering costs after that. Whereas, if the project moves forward, is constructed, the road commission pays all the engineering costs. So I always make sure residents know, there is a possibility, you can still be assessed for those engineering fees if you don't move forward after the project's bid out.
There is the possibility also, and we haven't done this, that I recall, at least while I've been on the board, is to actually, the township board can actually move forward with a special assessment for paving a street. However, the residents can gather signatures, what, 20%?
I think 20% is correct.
Yeah.
So they can gather signatures to oppose our, our imposing a, a special assessment in that neighborhood, right?
Yeah, and, and so if that happens, we get a 20% in opposition, position, we can't move forward until we get a 51% in favor. And so what we've done is, as a matter of policy, have taken that out of play. So we don't have 51% from the beginning and maintain 51%.
Yep, we're not going forward. So, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Sears.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to approve the plan for project. Ms. Hugo makes the motion, supported by Mr. Fike?
Supported by Fike. Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Trusty White?
No.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six to one, motion passes.
Okay, item B, the board will consider a motion to purchase two 2022 Chevrolet Equinox all-wheel-drive vehicles. Mr. Limina?
This request comes to you through Chief Wiles and the Police Department. It is to replace two older vehicles, 2007 and a 2008, I believe, that it's used in the Administration Investigation Division. So these are unmarked vehicles, not police vehicles. This is going through the state of Michigan bid price through Berger Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $48,592. If you guys agree and you make the motion, it will also be to allow us to declare them as surplus and sell them on GOV deals as surplus equipment.
Any questions, concerns, thoughts? Mr. Fike? I'm sorry, Mr. White?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by Trusty White, support by Trusty Fike.
Motion by White, supported by Fike. This is item 8C?
Correct.
8C. Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 8D, the board will consider a motion to purchase Axon redaction assistant software. Let's see, we have, right?
Yeah, I think you want to bring Chief Wiles up for this. This has to do with, you guys know, we're going into some new FOIA equipment, and at the same time, with the addition of body cams that are combined with the cameras that we already have in our vehicles, we've got to have specialized redaction software in order to get through that. And when you add body cams, you add a lot of requests for FOIAs, to get that information off those body cams.
That is 100% true.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, before you, as a, as a request to purchase the Axon redaction assistant software, this ties in, as Superintendent Limina said, with our body camera and our new in-car video system that you guys previously approved. I would have asked for this during that approval process. However, I did not know this was a additional charge for this enhanced redaction software. It comes with, the product we have comes with redaction software, but it is nowhere near sufficient for what we're going to need for the amount of FOIAs that we currently get. And then you throw in body camera and the in-car camera, we expect to do a lot more FOIAs and have to do that redaction. This was not a budgeted purchase. However, I do have funds in my drug forfeiture account, which I would use to pay for this.
Chief, saying that, will you explain to the board what the drug forfeiture account is?
Absolutely.
What it can be used for?
Yes. So the drug forfeiture, on occasion, officers will, whether it's through an investigation or a traffic stop, they will come in contact with someone who has contraband or illegal drugs. Part of that investigation is also money they may have or gains, they, financial gains they may have received from selling of that illegal substance. Through the court process, that money is forfeited, and a portion of that comes back to the Police Department. That is placed in a drug forfeiture fund. That drug forfeiture fund can only be used for law enforcement enhancement purchases. I can't use it for personnel, I can't use it for overtime, only items that can benefit the Police Department, such as equipment.
Mr. Fike? Chief, can you give us an example of something that would be redacted from a, say, a body cam?
Sure, absolutely. For instance, we have a crash, and that subject is intoxicated. He goes to the hospital. We go to the hospital to follow up our investigation there, and as far as medical records, doctor conversations with him, that type of stuff would be redacted. And inside of our vehicles, we have MDCs or computers. They have lean messages on them to take off that screen, so you can't see what the computer screen says, which is law enforcement-sensitive information. Could be faces, depending if there's juveniles in a complaint. Really, the sky's the limit, depending on what type of investigation or type of call you're responding to.
And do you have, like, rules about what you can and can't redact?
We do. So FOIA is under state law. So we have to follow the state law on that. Sherry Potter is our FOIA coordinator for that, and she is a wizard, but when in doubt, we contact Attorney Laddie's office, and, and they talk it out and make sure that we are complying with the law for, for redaction. There are exceptions to the law, though, that can be exempt.
And is FOIA, like, a full-time job, and then some?
Quite honestly, it's getting to be that. You know, last, last couple of years, we've done close to 800 FOIAs, and that is without body cameras. Every FOIA request we get requests body camera footage. We don't give that now, because we don't have them yet until they're implemented very soon, in the next couple of months. Our time that we spend doing FOIAs is going to go through the roof. The software will greatly increase the effectiveness and efficiency of that process. But as far as a full-time person to do it, I could see that very soon being the case, just by the sheer amount of FOIAs and the labor intensiveness of completing a FOIA request.
But the software is going to reduce it by half, right?
Not by half, but it'll make it easier. But it will not, it will not, it'll still be quite a load.
I, I, I want to make a comment. If it wasn't for Ms. Sherry Potter, this would be a full-time job. She not only does that job, but she does administrative.
I know.
So I'm just throwing that out there.
Mm-hmm.
I've seen her work.
Yeah, I agree. I was just making light, but the, the body cams definitely will add...
There's no doubt. Like I said, every request we get has that in that now, and we just don't have body cameras on the road yet, so we don't have to do that, obviously.
So we're going to need to budget for something along those lines really soon, huh?
Quite possibly.
Okay. Any other thoughts or concerns? Making the motion, Ms. Hugo?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Trusty Hugo, supported by Dr. Raridan.
Supported by Raridan. Okay. Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Item E, the board will consider a motion to approve updated documents pertaining to FOIA requests. Chief?
So we had, related to our FOIA discussion, but this is a different software that we are talking about. So earlier this year, late last year, due to the amount of FOIA requests we are getting, and to increase our effectiveness and efficiency in that, we're looking for ways to get better. And Sherry Potter visited a couple of other police departments to see how they do it, especially with the implementation of the body cameras coming on. We wanted to make sure we could still accommodate everybody. Came across a software program called GOVQA. And GOVQA is a FOIA management program. And as you know, in, in the township, the clerk's office is responsible for FOIAs. I believe Deputy Clerk Henry is your FOIA coordinator over here. In the Police Department, Sherry Potter is our FOIA coordinator. They have worked together on this project, as far as GOVQA and implementing this and getting this going. Along those lines, on our website right now, there's two documents that are published, and they pertain to FOIA, and they give the public information on the procedures to properly do a FOIA. So part of this process of getting the software going is to review those documents, make sure they're still accurate. There's a couple of areas that are documented on the, on the agenda item that we found were no longer accurate, and we need to update to be in compliance with state law. And that is the request today to approve those three items, to make sure we're still compliant with state law for FOIA requests.
Okay. Documents are in the pack. Did anybody have any questions on...
Make a motion if it's in order?
It's in order. Okay.
I just had a question.
Sure.
Sorry. Regarding the, the fee for processing the FOIA requests, do you determine that on the amount of time, based on the amount of time that takes together the information, or?
Yes. It's based on the way, the lowest, lowest wage of the person that's able to collect that information.
Thank you.
So do you have to guesstimate that, or?
So that's the beauty of GOVQA, is that, that helps calculate that and stores that information, so we don't have to do that manually. It's one of the perks of the, of the software program we're going to.
Very good.
So I continue in my motion to support the 8D?
Support by Ms. Hugo.
Okay, supported by Ms. Hugo. Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks. Item F, the board will consider a motion to approve Wald Orphan Sons as the lowest qualified bidder for the replacement of the pedestrian trail bridge at Creasy Bicentennial Park, and have the township superintendent sign and execute all documents. So, Mr. Limina?
This is part of the walking trail, and I hope all of you have had the opportunity in the past to, to through some of those trails in the, in the woods out at the park. If not, I highly encourage you to get out there after we get the bridge fixed, of course. Because currently, if, there's some rotting timbers underneath, and it's just pedestrian walk bridge across there, but Patrick had noticed that the issue was there, and, and this has been a process going on, going back to row engineering back in 2021, to really start and get through this. And with that, Patrick?
Yep. So we did notice that we had some structural rotting on the current bridge. The current bridge is all wood. So if you recall, about a year ago, we came before you to talk about engineering and doing this project. Through the, through the engineering process, Eagle had some interesting requirements, so we had to work through those and work with the Drain Commission, because it is a county drain that runs through there. So they finally came up with a design for a culvert, you know, that's rated that we can get all of our equipment and that through, 10 feet wide. But the cost estimate that we had, you know, six months ago versus the cost estimate, or what... or what the bids came back, was, um, fairly surprising to everybody involved. Uh, the culvert price went up, the timber for, uh, the guardrails around the side went up. Um, so, uh, Waldorf came in at, uh, a little over ninety-four thousand, we were expecting it to be around seventy-six. Um, so, uh, talking with Superintendent Limada, uh, we thought that this would be a good opportunity, as we talk about the park infrastructure, to use some ARPA funds for that. Um, so the plan would be to use the ARPA funds for the construction of, uh, the culvert, and then, uh, we'll continue to use the, uh, uh, budgeted, uh, amount for the, uh, rest of the engineering and project management.
Any thoughts, concerns, questions?
I just can't believe that there's an eighty-thousand-dollar bid and a four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar bid.
Uh, they, uh, they, they screwed up their numbers.
Oh.
So, um, yeah, that was, well, and even the one fifty-four was, uh, you know, seemed a little, a little high. Um, but, you know, when, when we went through it, you know, if, if you go into the next pages and that, you know, you can see, you know, what they scoped for what item, and, um, you know, it kind of makes sense on why some of those were a little, uh, a little high, so...
Sometimes we see bids, um, Trustee White, where somebody says, "Uh, I don't really have time to do the job, but I don't know what anybody else is coming in at, and if they give me this much money, I'll do the job."
Yeah.
And culverts can get expensive real quick, too.
Uh, do we have a motion before the...
No, but would somebody care to make that?
I'll make it, if no one else will.
Uh, Mr. White says he'll make the motion.
Hey, White makes the motion.
Supported by Robertson.
Supported by Robertson, very good. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Uh, Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're spending money on pathways.
Yes.
Hundred thousand dollars there, so... Anyways, that makes it more usable and another pathway that's going to get improved.
Yes, it's never been out there, there's close to three miles worth of hiking trails out of Bicentennial Park on, uh, both the east and the west side, so, if you'd like to ask, let me know, I'll get you one.
Very good.
I'll be sure not to use it until the bridge is fixed.
You have to be escorted to go out there.
Yeah, Sarah. So future agenda items, um, something I've spoken with Mr. Limada and Mr. Sears and a few others, uh, Chief Wiles, um, Chief Reddott, with regard to a possible cleanup day for the township, um, in terms of, uh, organizing volunteers that would want to help, uh, especially here with, you know, the warmer weather and the snow disappearing, we're starting to see all the litter that has gathered, um, last fall and through the winter along the road sides. Um, you know, you go down Umbry, Baldwin, even Hill Road and Wakefield, right there, there's, um, substantial amounts of litter. So I'm looking at May seventh, it's a Saturday, and maybe for a couple hours in the morning on that date, um, we've got a little bit of time to plan before then, but, uh, I know I just kind of wanted to get the thoughts of the board on, on doing something like that, and if you want to participate, we'd be glad to have you. Sarah, we're going to put you somewhere not walking on the sides of, uh, roads, but...
I, I have cleaned up downhill road and...
But, uh, maybe we even do like, you know, some hot dogs and hamburgers afterwards somewhere, maybe at the pavilion.
I'll be in touch with you.
For, uh, everybody of volunteers.
Okay, something good idea.
Anybody have any thoughts, concerns? Okay.
I think it's something that's needed, and I think we'll get some, some volunteers coming out for it. We'll have to make sure, you know, safety is number one with vests and things to pick up litter, so we don't have people using their hands and cutting their hand or what have you, so we'll get appropriate equipment, what have you.
BYOR, bring your own rake.
Or trash picker upper.
All right, all right.
This, this time maybe just picking up litter would be enough, without even raking or doing anything else, but maybe we'll, we'll have such an army of people that we'll decide to do it again and plant some flowers or something, too, so... Okay, well, we'll make sure that's an agenda item for our next meeting as well, and we'll start putting together some plans for it.
Planning Commission, anything, Ms. Hugo?
Our next meeting is Thursday.
Okay, very good. Mr. White, anything with the ZBA?
The April meeting is canceled because there's nothing to discuss.
Okay. Mr. Fike, anything with Metro Alliance?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Anything with Police Stu, uh, Mr. Kilmer, anything with Trevor's department?
No.
Okay. Clerk Robertson?
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Laddie?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Limada?
Uh, next meeting, uh, from a strategic planning update, facilities will probably come back to you, because we should be prepared to, um, have a conversation about, uh, how we're going to move forward with the project manager position. I think the board should be updated on our IT efforts, um, just as an FYI, uh, interesting side note, um, talked to our IT department about when, uh, the Ukraine invasion occurred and the amount of traffic that was generated, uh, leading up to that, um, as attacks on our system, uh, were measurable. Um, so it's interesting to note that, I hear some of that on the news, but, uh, the amount of, um, uh, cyber attacks that we had of people trying to get into our system, and the IT's, uh, uh, director, uh, Nathan Lucavell, has done an amazing job.